Um. Before we did get the use variants of whatever. Uh, I was talking about that meeting before. Was you gave us some really good input that evening. As far as what you wanted the site to look like. So we got together and worked very hard to to come up with a site plan. That we think definitely reflects the comments of the board. Um, for example, one of the comments was. We had fifteen parking spaces because the ordinance required us that fifteen parking spaces. The board rightfully so thought that that was an excess amount of parking. On number one, number two, the board also disliked the fact that we had parking. Between the building and Shrewsbury Avenue. All of that parking was eliminated. We reduced the parking spaces from fifteen down to six. Now, some of the board's comments reflected the fact that he recalled this has been in existence for one year. And never had any park, not even employee's home. So the the board's thought was were. Um, it seems that the majority of your business, walk-in business, which is true. But also by closing off Shrewsbury Avenue. There's the big cuts there. Um, we have added significant street parking. Uh, that that now can be utilized to effectively have people drive up right in front of the. Uh, the facility go in, pick up whatever they want, walk right back out, get right back in the car. In addition to the six parks. So uh, literally. The advice of the board and did we hopefully exactly what you wanted us to do. That was number one. Number two, in addition to that, you asked us to do a significant amount of landscaping. Which we are going to do with the exception of the number of trees on Shrewsbury Avenue. Uh, the shade tree commission question that we put a number of trees in there. Mohammed County does not want those trees. They're going to rising Shrewsbury Avenue. And in our conversations with the county, they said wasting money. You don't want the trees there to begin with. Number one, number two, when we undertake improvements to Shrewsbury Avenue. We're going to reboot the menu. But I said, just advise the board of that fact that. That you don't want trees there and we have to get county approval. So it's counterproductive to do that. So we're going to put in the donation that is required to supplement. The fact that we're not planting those trees. And when we explain that to the county, coming here and explaining it to you. They were satisfied and hopefully the board accepts that because without. If we contradict the county, we won't get county approval than the whole application of it. So. Um, that's where we are as far as that is concerned. Uh, we were also asked um, to change the um, appearance, the exterior appearance of the building. Because it was a white building with uh, with nothing of any significance to the arc. Uh, Mr. The bomb. Yeah, the interior, we are going to paint it. Uh, we're going to get significant landscaping that. At manage. The exterior of the building. Um, so we believe that all of that substantially enhances the appearance of the structure. We hope the board likes it and will approve the application. Um, in addition to that, um, Mr. Stockton will testify basically also. Um, but board calls that that trying to give you some historical perspective as far as. What transpired at the last meeting and that we were very grateful that for the board's recommendations and. I put very hard to force. So with that, if this chairman, if the court please. I would like to call Mr. O'Neil unless anybody has any questions before it started or concerns they want addressed. Yes.
Yeah, just one quick question. The six parking spaces, how many are handicapped?
I've one. Oh, there's only one required. That's cool.
Thank you.
I have a question. How many are on the street? That you're gonna, you know, you close the. Added to the.
We we close those. So we picked up, I think it's. Three, three part.
So there's three.
On Shrewsbury.
On Shrewsbury and six and the, okay, thanks.
Thanks. And then we have parking.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
God bless you.
We have the trees I see here in the rendering, beautiful rendering, gorgeous. The trees I see there appear to be. In landscaping and at the front of the building as opposed to on the street. Um. Uh, can you tell me the number of feet? That they are back that they would involve the county?
No, uh.
Yeah, I see one, two, three, four. Like, I mean, again, I know this is the rendering.
Over. I swear you in.
Yeah.
All right, you could just state your name and business address.
Moving on, you're five moments, we read them.
All right, and your testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed.
Architect and planner.
Architect and planner. And your licenses and certifications are current and up to date. And I believe you've testified and were accepted uh, in conjunction with the use variants.
Yes. But the location on the renderings is that.
Okay. How many feet is that back from where? I mean, the county is usually interested in trees that are involving in their pavement on the front. Not the things that are technically in the front yard.
Yes.
So.
You're in the front yard.
These are the front yard, but the county is still concerned that they're interfering with their planning scheme?
No, no, they're playing, I'm sorry, they're playing these between the sidewalk and the curb.
Okay.
What we're showing is.
Inside of that.
Yeah, these trees can remain. The trees that we did, that we were talking today, Mr. Neil is spot on. Those were trees that were going to be between the sidewalk and uh.
The sidewalk.
And. Okay, so we kept as many trees as we could uh, without running into an issue with.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, I love the landscaping uh, drawing that you gave us. Um, but I would like to ask for clarification. In this drawing, it's showing brick and it looks like a sidewalk at an angle.
Yes.
Wonderful landscaping. But in the site plan, there's no diagonal sidewalk, there's no brick, which is accurate.
That's an app. Reason for that is that nobody's going to walk.
You know, just speak up a little if you could.
That, I don't know.
It, yeah, and then the mic's not working, so.
Um, the, nobody's going to walk straight into the building because the sidewalk comes into the middle of the block. People are going to walk north and south and want the angle to be cut. Johnny Jeff.
Okay, so so this is accurate.
Yeah.
Not, not the, not this. Thank you. Okay, does it also include the bench? There's a bench in the, in the diagram. And I thought that was a nice addition. That's going to include the bench?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay. Anything, Jackie?
I do have a couple. Turn on your mic, Jackie. My mic works? Yeah, you want to?
Uh, I I wish to also represent that the floor plan, the doors, all of that as far as the the building itself. The physical structure are the same. Okay, so that everything, my two or as far as the hours of operation. Always, all of that is the same. Two, two ways, ninety-eight percent of the time occasionally. Way, uh, all the trash pickup is going to be at the rear. That cardboard. Um, and that is going to remain the same. So essentially, all of the site plan elements that we referred to in the first hearing. Are going to, are going to remain the same. So there's no new uh, floor plan or anything such as that. All of that is exactly as was laid out last time. But the interior is the same. It's just the exterior, meaning the parking that we moved. By the way, one of the requests that I didn't mention was that you didn't want it, no parking in the front. And that was also eliminated. Um, and so I think we're, we, again, we did our best to try to be everything. That's yours.
There are only one curb cut now. Just like.
Yeah, one curb cut, yes.
There's two.
Oh, I'm sorry, one's out, yeah.
Right now, it's just like they're huge. So is it like the same?
No.
Yes, there's. Both different. Okay, no, that's good.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I definitely appreciate all the. Um.
Your mic.
What?
My mic's work. Those.
I mean, I definitely appreciate everything. All the effort you guys put into it. Think it was awesome.
Thank you. Well, you know what? And thank you for the advice.
Hey, Jack.
All right.
Much better looking. Uh, play a much better plan.
Okay, Ed, I just need to go through my letter.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if this, uh, the arc, you know, whoever wants to respond to this, um. So it's June fourth, letter page three. Um, I'm assuming testimony will be provided regarding the parking variants or?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's. Yes, um. Are you, you have any items on my letter that you disagree with that we? Um. Are you going to depict the limits of sidewalk replacement on Catherine Street?
Sorry.
Sidewalk replacement on Catherine?
Yes.
Will you replace the deteriorated sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um. Uh. We, you will coordinate with the borough engineer in the county for Shrewsbury Avenue. You are already doing that, so that's fine. Um. Can you include yellow painted curb at least twenty-five feet from Catherine Street intersection?
We are doing that.
Um, I would need proposed grading information for sidewalk and ADA. That.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, um. Uh, confirming that there's no new utility connections?
Correct.
Okay. Um, off-site water vulnerability contribution to the amount of three hundred twenty dollars. Okay. We'll talk about the parking spaces in a second. ADA spaces, we need an A, um, a van accessible space. Okay. Um. Can you indicate the flow direction of the one-way flow in in? In the drop-off area with arrows?
Yeah, we're going, we're going to do that.
Okay.
We are going to do that, yes.
Um. Okay, this one. Um, you only have, I think, and maybe this is a question for your traffic engineer, you only have, I believe, twenty-two feet. For the aisle width. Is that right? And twenty, no, you have twenty-four and a half between the end of the parking space and the building. So you're using that whole width as your aisle width as you're backing up. Um, I'm concerned about. You know, damage to the building or anybody walking alongside, because it looks like there's a sidewalk along the building or?
Or ac- actually, we're proposing balance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Actually, for your suggestion.
Yeah, good, all right, perfect. So there's a way to protect.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um. I think we talked about the. Um, the, the. The awning projecting out last time, that's not an issue, right?
No, it's not.
We took the awning off the panel.
Okay.
Yeah. The one, the awning you were concerned with, we removed.
Okay. I just need testimony for this. Is there any concern about that back? Um, doorway and the parking lot and driveway? So basically, you're opening up a door and you're right at the, at the drive aisle.
Yeah, well, we, we anticipate that.
Right here, this doorway. I just need testimony from somebody to say if it's. If you think that that's an unsafe condition or?
I, we'll have testimony on it, but.
Okay.
We, we did discuss that. We had with our traffic engineer present and our, uh, our engineer. And both of them felt that it's okay.
Okay, okay. Uh. The three point six. The architectural plans show paver sidewalks and different limits of sidewalk around the building than the site plan. So which, I guess that's kind of like, which plan are we following?
First materials, it would be the engineer's plan.
It'll be the what?
The engineer's plan.
Um, construction details shall be provided for the proposed handicap signpost.
Yep.
Okay, uh, stop bar detail, um, we need to see the location of the stop bar.
Yep.
Uh, we talked about, oh, are you repaving the parking lot? Or are you repairing, are you patching it or are you repaving the whole thing?
We're going to patch it and, and if, if after patching it. We felt it was unsatisfactory, then we're going to just pay them.
Okay. Um, you're proposing two W two building mounted signs, one on the east facade and on the north facade of the building. Um, looks like it complies with rural ordinance. The architectural plans indicate the signs are intended to be illuminated, so. And you confirm that it will be, it will comply with the ordinance?
Yes, yes.
So what I did, sign illumination complies with the ordinance requirements?
Yes.
Yes.
The, if I, if I may say that the, the square footages of the signs will conform, but there's two signs, which I think technically. Or this doesn't allow, I think they wanted a waiver or something. So I think it's a wager. One of the cases, the work we fix at least.
Anna.
I think.
Um.
One on Catherine.
If it, if you have one facing each, um. The, one second, I think one of the parking attendants. Um. So per the ordinance, if you're allowed one sign per public, um, facing street. So for what, uh, right away. You can.
Ask me for one, so becoming north.
If you're having one on Shrewsbury and if you're having one on, is that Catherine? Catherine, then you should be good on one sign per facade facing the street.
Okay, we have, they're both safe on the confirms.
Can we take a couple minute break while he's?
Yes, yeah.
I need to.
Anybody else leave their windows open?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Nice.
Come back in, it'll be my problem then.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that. Make sure the window is.
You, on that one.
To do that, it's like slapping, let's go on big.
Yeah. That'll be good. Not to be lost in anything, but, um. Uh, shout out to the parking attendant, right?
I know, good job. It's very so nice.
And I always think he knows all of us. I don't, I mean, I'm sure he knows.
Wonder, I mean, he always leaves everybody, but he should be familiar with everybody by now. I guess you have to be.
And to know, like.
Trying to miss the window, right?
Uh, right.
We are fragile with groups here.
I have the names.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
R I A L. P A T E L. N A R A Y A N. B A N I Y A. And F A L G U H I, Patel.
Got it. Uh, and anyone have any questions or comments about conflicts? Okay.
And that wasn't a spelling bee.
Yeah. I guess, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Evans. Well, aren't so young, oh my god, so we can proceed.
Everything opened, cause it was so hot, I forgot about the thunderstorm. And it's here.
So Jackie, I think you're.
Yep. Okay, I'll keep going. Page five, uh, three point one one is just a statement, basically that one of the garage roll-up doors will be replaced with a man door. Um, traffic comments will be handled by the traffic engineer. Uh, item five, grading and drainage. Um, can you provide, uh, grading information for the ADA accessible route in the revised plans? Okay, um, can you let us know where the roof leaders are going, or will be directed to? Or are? Are they changing?
They're not changing.
Okay.
They go to the back.
Um, just, uh, five point three is just a statement that there's no, um, proposed drainage. Cause there really isn't any change to the building itself, um, from a drainage perspective. Um, item six is the landscape and lighting. Um, our ordinance requires a minimum of two shrubs and one tree for each two hundred fifty square foot of open space. For additional landscaping for users other than single-family residential, totaling a pyramid of thirty-six shrubs and eighteen trees for the property. The plans show twenty-one shrubs and three trees. Will you be requesting a design waiver?
Yes, because, yeah. So if we, we are maxing out, so to speak.
Okay. Uh, our ordinance requires shade trees along all property frontages at a rate of one tree for fifty feet of lot coverage based on a total lot frontage of eighty-seven feet on Shrewsbury Avenue and a hundred sixty feet on Catherine Street. You're required to provide two shade trees on Shrewsbury and four shade trees on Catherine. Two shade trees exist on Catherine Street. The plans shall be revised to include the required trees or post a payment in lieu of planting trees at the rate of a thousand dollars per tree or four thousand dollars for the four remaining required treat.
Um. I have the trees on Catherine gonna remain. And we'll make a contribution for the others.
Okay, on that one, um, because I kinda had a conversation with a representative from the, um, shade tree commission. Committee, because the trees are, would on Shrewsbury would be in the jurisdiction of the county. And therefore preventing them, would, would it be fair for them to have to pay into the? Um, trust fund, because technically they can't do it, even if they wanted to do it, they can't really do it. So to make them pay, I, I just don't.
Yeah.
See the point, would it, couldn't we waive?
Yeah.
From them. Cause if they wanted to do it, yeah, I agree, yeah. Shade tree.
Impossible.
I think that's fine. I think that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, the site plans propose to utilize the existing building mounted lighting for the property. The applicant shall provide testimony regarding the existing lighting.
Engineers could cover it.
Uh, outdoor lighting, um, during non-operating hours of business on sites, not necessarily. All outdoor lighting during non-operating hours of the business on site, not necessary for safety and security purposes, shall be reduced, activated by motion sensor devices or turned off. The applicant shall provide testimony. Those hours of operation and lighting, okay. Um. The plans should be revised to be consistent with the resolution of approval condition I. Um. The ordinance requires a minor site plan as a development which does not increase parking requirements by more than five spaces nor entail construction of a total of more than fifteen spaces. The change in use from a motor vehicle surface station to a retail space increases parking requirements by seven spaces, therefore the application is considered a major site plan. So just change the, the name of the plan to major.
Okay.
Are you considering consolidating the lots?
We don't own the property.
Okay.
So we're going on a, like a long-term lease, but, uh, we did explore that with the owner, he did not want to be forced into that. He doesn't know what he's gonna do with the property. If it.
Okay, um, the rest of the comments are, um, standard comments. Building Department will review the plans for ADA compliance. Fire official will review the plans for emergency access. And you'll need, um, you know, some, uh, permits or approvals from uh, perhaps Public Works, Public Utilities, um. Monmouth County Planning Board and Monmouth County Department of Health. Thank you.
I think there was another thing, we, we talked about the last thing about not having any advertisement stickers or things on the windows.
Actually, actually, my recollection is. Is that correct?
No, it was the posters and the neon signs.
Any other questions for Mr. O'Neill?
I do have a question, um. The bathrooms is gonna do ADA compliance as per the building codes. Are both bathrooms ADA compliant?
One this.
One bathroom, are bathrooms available to clients, to customers? Is there one for customers, one for employees, or is there one for male, one for female?
One for male, one for female.
One for male, one for girl, and both are ADA compliant? I see a ramp, I just wasn't sure where it went to and if the door was widened up.
It is, the, um, in the existing building, the area when it was a.
One of the bays.
Walked in, it was a couple of higher than the bays. I think, cause at that time, there was a building code requirement, so that's why there was. So they felt that it's about four inches.
Okay.
Okay, any, anyone else for Mr. O'Neill? Anyone from the public for this witness? Okay, I, I, the only one I'd like to hear from is the traffic, your traffic, uh, professional.
Alright, good evening. If you would get state your name and business address.
John McCormick, Dynamic Traffic, nineteen oh four, Main Street.
Uh, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best you know, is the L P D?
Do.
And just for the record, you're testifying in your capacity as. And your licenses and certifications are current and up to date?
They are.
And I believe you were sworn and accepted and testified at the youth variance hearing, correct?
That's good.
Thank you.
Okay, Jackie, you had some questions for traffic?
I did, uh, maybe just justification for the parking variance.
Sure.
And, um, the concerns about the bollards or backing up.
Sure. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, it's good to see everyone. Um, yeah, the, the parking, basically, we did, we redesigned the site in response to concerns uh, over the board and quite frankly, on our team too. Uh, we think it made up a, you, much more youth project. We realize, when you think back, that this is a relocation of a neighborhood store, and I think I said that at the last meeting. Eighty percent of their customer base walks in, so there is not a tremendous need for parking. The requirement is in, is in the ordinance for a more traditional type highway commercial store. That requirement would be fifteen parking spaces. We're providing six, five plus one handicap on site. We are maintaining the three on-street spaces that are on Catherine, adjacent to our property, and we are creating three brand-new spaces on Shrewsbury Avenue because of the removal of the front driveway apron. Basically extended the entire front of the property. So, um, basically, we have three on Catherine, three brand-new ones that can be used by anybody, right? Brand-new parking on Shrewsbury Avenue. I don't often get to say that, so I'll say it twice. And then we have our own six behind the building. So with that parking supply, with the customer base, uh, that we have, we feel that is more than, well, I think, to serve. Uh, we're going to the back door that opens into the parking area. Uh, we looked at the plans, um, that door is gonna be a sliding door, like a pocket door. I know it's shown graphically as a open into the parking lot, but it's not gonna do that. It's gonna slide within, within its own pocket. Um, there's gonna be, as we talked about, there's gonna be protective bollards that are, you know, they gotta be a foot off the building or so, just alongside. So there's gonna be a little bit of relief right there. And quite honestly, the parking lot is only gonna lose all the boys. So it's a very low traffic, you know, status on the side. So for those reasons, I have no, uh, no concern with the operation of that door.
Any questions from the board for this? Witness. Okay, thank you, Mr. McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. McKenna, you wanna?
So.
So.
Sure, um. Once you kind of follow the fight before, for your patience. Um, I think you helped us with this fight and would have been, we, we've been problem dealing with him. Owners are dedicated in discussions that we have had with them to really building this out as a first-class building, and we hope that Endring is similar to what you will be seeing goodbye. Um, and we've spent, it's been kind of a long road for us, so to speak. But we took every comment that we got very seriously and worked hard to satisfy or, but also the burb too. Uh, we think we'll have a much better facility for the borough of every aspect, not just parking. Uh, the appearance of the building, landscaping, et cetera. Uh, very satisfied when we got to the end of the day and we all sat in the big conference room. This pretty thoroughly, make sure that we felt we had the best that we could do.
Okay.
I'd like to see if that's what we've done.
Great. Any com- any, any comments from the board on this congregation before we take a vote? Any comments from the public? Don't see any, we'll close that. Um, anybody, um, Mr. Kennedy, before we.
Sure.
Take a vote.
If the board is inclined, I've taken the liberty of writing down some, um. Potential conditions of approval, and I, I just sort of highlighted, uh, some of the ones that I thought were uh, particularly important at the youth variance portion. So anyway, if, if, uh, if I would suggest. If the board is inclined to approve the application, it would be compliance with the promises, commitments, and representations the team, uh, made tonight, compliance with the T and M Associates Review Memorandum. And Sean, did you have a memorandum that had any condition? No, okay. Uh, compliance with all affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, and directive payments as, as required, uh, by the prevailing ordinance. Uh, confirmation, or we usually have a twenty-four month shelf life within, between, uh, the resolution and issuance of building permits, obtaining any necessary outside approvals. Uh, usually, uh, Mr. McKenna, we have a requirement that, uh, prior to, uh, completion or prior to any final permits or CFOs, uh, uh, your design professional sign a certification confirming that the improvements were installed in accordance with the approved plans, in accordance with the testimony, and in accordance with the resolution. Um, compliance with the prior conditions of approval in the youth variance unless specifically elevated. Uh, we had a developer's agreement if necessary. Sean, I don't know if that is necessary. Uh, no? Okay, and then we had compliance with the Environmental Commission and the Shade Tree Commission, although, Mr. McKenna, you said not putting, uh, trees in the, uh, right of way, correct? For the county.
Gonna waive the fee.
And way, and the board, uh, waves fee. Uh, compliance with ADA regulations, the beautiful landscaping will be perpetually, uh, maintained. Um, uh, repave the damaged pavement. Jackie, if I think what you said, sign illumination comply. Um. Let's see, private trash collection, uh, with the fire official reviewing emergency access. That, uh, uh, outdoor lighting, uh, it's gonna be on a motion, uh, sensor. Uh, so it'll be, basically be off during, uh, non-operating hours except for necessary lighting. Uh, uh, Jackie wanted to comply with condition I of the resolution, the youth variance, we'll get back to that. And the other, uh, with regard to the youth variance portion. Um, there was a lot of testimony presented regarding the operational parameters as to what the hours of operation, number of employees and all those. So all those are gonna be reincorporated, uh, at length as if they were repeated tonight, so that's, uh, pretty, pretty standard. And let's see, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things that I just wanted to make sure if they're still relevant, and if not, um. I think one of the things was that, at least the testimony was that the applicants are not gonna simultaneously operate the existing liquor store and, and the new liquor store, I think. Was that? That was one of the conditions, I think, of the prior.
That's correct, and they can't, they can't do it.
Private hauler, and we had at least, uh, in the prior condition, no outside storage of materials or cardboard associated with the liquor store site, is that still?
Well, except for the, the, uh, cardboard that's, that goes back to the treasure. I mean, in other, in other words, we won't be, uh, it won't be contained.
Okay.
But it'll be out, it'll be outdoors.
Got it. Um, and we have, uh, lighting, downward lighting, and no adverse spillover. And I think, Mr. Chairman, some of the things that you were just asking about, uh, one of them was, um, we're showing a confirmation that the front windows of liquor store facing Shrewsbury Avenue shall be frosted glass, the details of which shall be further reviewed. Sean, was that something that we talked about at the youth variance portion?
Yes, but it was more so about, um, preventing the neon signs.
Okay.
The poster.
Okay.
If you wanna cross it out.
No.
I mean.
I, I think it did.
Was to have frosted glass.
In case that they. In case that they want it for security purposes.
Security.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not using the posters to.
Block the view.
Block the view. But posters are a no, though.
Okay.
Frosted glass is a yes.
Neon lights.
Neon is a no-go.
Okay, and let's see. Um. I guess, Jackie, I had confirmation about EV parking spaces comply. Is that just? Whatever the state requirements are.
Yeah, I. Only one space.
Quick, yeah.
Okay.
So we'd need that.
Um no, I'll take that. And now we had confirmation as to the absence of any window posters and clutter pollution at the site. Confirmation as to the absence of any neon lights and signs and um Mr. Havens, I think this, oh no, um that we had confirmation that the existing um the parking lot will be converted to lawn area. We have that. And I think um Mr. Havens, I think this was if my recollection, uh one of the conditions from the prior policy was that the applicant adopt and strictly enforce an aggressive anti-loitering policy. Um I think that we had that the last time, maybe it wasn't.
I didn't bring that up.
Okay.
It was a discuss.
The bench in there.
Yeah. It was discussed about preventing like um unwanted loitering.
Okay, so should I keep that in, but?
Yeah, like they don't manage.
Got it.
There's one guy that stands in front of the store a lot.
And Chris mentioned picking up.
Well, you can't.
Yes.
You got a bench and very large rocks.
Bench. Please, he'll be.
I'll take a rock.
He stands there. Thanks. Sweetheart.
Okay, can I mention the part? Well. Our mental commission requested that we do a planting for the space between on the southern end of the building to the property line, and it's too narrow. We investigated that, and if we could have plantings there, we would. But uh the engineer had offered an opinion at our at our joint session. He said, I I I can't do it. They will not last. Um. Or et cetera, he said uh it's just, it's very impractical. And he said it's it will become a nuisance as opposed to a benefit.
This would be in the between the fence and the that what they're asking?
Yeah, I mean, we we have a fence and we have uh yeah, at the rear of the building.
Yeah.
Say the rear.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
In the Shrewsbury side or the?
Okay, so.
The the uh the southerly side of the building.
Shrewsbury side. Shrewsbury side, yeah.
Yeah, true.
But there's planning on the Catherine side.
Oh, yeah.
House, yeah.
So we'll accept that, uh so it's accept uh that portion too narrow. Which part was too narrow? The portion on?
Southern part.
West, southern part.
I'd be. The building on Shrewsbury Avenue.
There's only three vehicles.
Okay. And then we had talked about now, Shawna, at the beginning, we had talked about uh donation uh uh for the for the trees not being planted. Is that out or is that only partially out?
No, that is, it's it's.
Wait.
It's wait.
Wait, got it.
We're waiving the the payment in lieu of planting.
Got it.
On on Shrewsbury Avenue.
Just on Shrewsbury.
Same street or?
Between.
The trees would remain.
Okay, the ones that are existing remain.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just between the sidewalk.
And the other ones are going to be accommodated by the county. From on Shrewsbury Avenue, the southern side.
Eliminated by the county.
Handled by the county, whatever.
They're eliminated because the county.
Yeah.
All right, then we had obviously contingent upon county planning board approval and uh who um Vince, I think your question was that uh the rendering, uh the inconsistencies between the plans, the rendering, the landscaping on the rendering and the architectural rendering are the accurate, correct?
Yeah. Not so.
And then um okay, and then uh in conjunction with that, uh the engineering plan should be revised to the angled sidewalk is going to match what is on A fifteen that we marked in. And then we're gonna include uh a bench on site.
Mm-hmm.
Got that. And um let's see, uh I'm not going to repeat all of the items that are in uh Jackie's review memorandum, uh but they're all included. And ban accessible space, bollards for the T and M. Um. Let's see. Um.
Parking lot would be patched, no?
Will be patched, except if it's unsatisfactory, it'll ultimately be repaved. That was the testimony. Um and then Shawna, it's one sign per per fa- per facade facing the street.
Yes.
Are any variants or design relief necessary?
No.
Okay.
I do have one other issue. Um and it's with the environmental commission recommendation. That we have, we have landscaping on the westerly portion. However, they had, they had also requested that we try to convert that into a rain guard. That would would, that would disrupt the grading of the property as it is. We 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 can't do. So it's just uh so it's an impossibility unless unless we change the whole grading of the park. Then we'd have.
I can't verify. There's no grades on the plan, so it's hard to you're saying is.
Well, and with work, give you the grading anyway. You'll know it when you see it.
I matched us to recommendation, I very.
Yeah, it wasn't required. It was just.
Right. It's not required. It's just recommend.
Right.
Yes.
All right, and then uh uh Sharon, we have both bathrooms confirmed are ADA compliant. And I think that was the gist. So I'm sorry it took long.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve or deny this application?
A motion to approve.
Second. And Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
Yes, and and I I'd just like to thank the applicant for listening to the board members and come coming back and presenting a plan that I think everybody's pretty happy with. So again, thank you very much for for doing that.
To your health.
Eileen Hogan?
Yes.
Ben Yara?
Yes.
Sharon Lee?
I'm not willing to this.
Um.
Um. While I don't necessarily see this as the best um addition to the west side of Red Bank. I appreciate your efforts and and I'm hoping that your successes will be equal to your effort that you put in here to obtain this opportunity and to accept our advice. And with that said, I will say yes.
Benson Light?
Yes.
And Anna Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Congratulations to the.
I'm safe.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sharon.
Oh, a second.
Second.
I get pretty wet.
Hold on, favor?
Uh.
Hi.